I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, they were saying what they do instead, so there's not such a large carryover, so people don't panic, is that they have a, like a rainy day fund? They've put money into that in the budget, and that way, you know, the carryover comes, it's not quite so large, and I'm just wondering if we've given thought to that.
It has been talked about, we do have that stabilization fund, which we took down to two, uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand, we took it down by two hundred. We could certainly put money back up into there. I do think currently our elected officials have a better understanding that we need that carryover just to conduct the business of the county. That's up to the board.
Of course, thinking how much do we need to get the county through the first two months?
Right.
So, would that be like-
They end up what they think is extra.
Two million, two and a half million?
Three.
Three million.
Three or four, yeah.
So, anything that we anticipate more than three million as carryover, maybe we should put in the stabilization fund, so that it doesn't, the headlines don't come out saying, "We have five or six million." I'd rather that it be disclosed, because we've been there before, and we're accused of hiding money.
Yeah.
I think it should be disclosed.
The one thing about rainy day funds is it is a little bit harder to get the money back for just anything that you want to do.
Could we put it in some other fund that would be just for an annual amount?
No, not just to set aside and hold. You can put it like to a capital fund where you specify this money is for this project, and you're allowed to build that up over time, but you can't just swoosh to one fund and begay.
You can't do other miscellaneous or anything like that.
No, that's, you have to declare what it, what it will go towards.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting that we hide money.
No, yeah.
It's just, um, sometimes it's misunderstood.
So, is that what you're thinking our carryover will be, about five million, Todd?
Um, we're gonna have around seven to seven and a half million in cash. I'm hoping around a million of that will be encumbered, so we'll have around six to six and a half as an unencumbered carryover balance, which is higher than it's been the last three years.
Yeah, it's been worse.
In fact, I think it's the highest we've had since the Great Recession.
It is, you're talking about three million more.
Yeah.
So, you can understand why other elected officials would say that when they come in and make a minor little request for whatever, that why don't we include it in the budget? That's what they're going to say.
Right.
And, you know, they'll say that anyway. No, I mean, I'm not being flippant, they, they will.
That is, some of it, we've been trying to build up to do some of our larger capital projects with cash.
Can we put it in the cap fund?
Uh, we could, again, you have to specify what it's going to go to.
Since we can amend the budgets in January or whenever, maybe it would be worthwhile doing our capital budget now, before January, and then just amend it in January, as we need it to.
Then we could, yeah, we could do that.
Yeah, I'd rather we concentrate on what we're planning to fund, and maybe that's working backwards.
Well, the first question is, what extras do you want to put in? Because then that matters as to where we take it from.
Right, so we need to just go through these one by one?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know, do you wanna, do you wanna quickly go through them all at once, just so you have an idea of everything that's there, and then we can go through and talk about each one individually?
One of these, Todd, where you put requested change, and if you didn't have it, that you had put it in, there was no provision made for it whatsoever?
These are all extra.
Okay.
Yes, these are all on top of what we did. The motor pool is asking for additional staff, they would like one additional person. And human resource, all three of these are not needed. The HR department themselves has requested a clerical type of person to help with filing, scheduling, areas, that type of thing. Of course, we have the prosecutor's request for doing his share of HR work. Both of those are probably in lieu of a director, if we would go that route, so.
Why do you have ninety-two thousand for the director? Is that what Janet is making?
No, that is what, no, no, no.
Oh, that, that would be what Paul made, that salary benefits everything. Yeah, well, we, we weren't going to refill the director position.
I, we had talked about doing temporary, I wasn't sure if it was permanent.
Well, that was-
If you've decided, that's fine. But that's why I have that listed that way.
Denise and Janet are working on a proposal to give us as to what specifically will be done by which entity, and I, you know, when we last met, they, they were wanting to do that, right, so that, that's in the opting.
That's coming, okay. Building security, we've been talking about, there's talk about the need for an actual person. If we go with actual people, there's several options, you can get unarmed private companies, you can get armed private companies, or we can go with sheriff deputies. The other options that have been mentioned are panic buttons, increased panic button use, increased cameras, adding the card swipe doors more frequently, so employees can still traverse, but the public would be held there, and then a metal detector. There was either one or two, depending on how we'd limit the building flow to the treasurer section.
Do you have the figures for all those, or is it Joanne's?
The metal detector Joanne's still working on, the cameras and panic buttons, we have rough ideas, it just depends on how many you want to do, you know, and where they are. Some locations require additional wiring, some locations are ready to go, and they're very cheap, so those depend upon where they're going. The auditor, her requests for some, were for some overtime money, she would like a new weights and measure truck, parts for her vehicles, which she does not pay parts, because it's a general fund, and then she thought her advertising had bumped up. The treasurer did not make any requests for 2016, he did indicate, though, that they are making some changes to how it operates, and that may lead to more 2017.
Can we back up, auditor, the five hundred for parts?
Yes.
Can we just cross that off, because she doesn't pay it anyway?
I would, I would, yeah, that's, I recommend a zero.
Can you go back to the auditor, weights and measures truck?
Yes.
Is there not separate funds for weights and measures?
That's a general fund truck.
Oh.
Joe does not think it needs replaced, that's in my comment. I asked him for his recommendations, and I had specified that the auditor had mentioned that, and that the veterans had requested a van.
Okay.
And he gave comments on those, and his comment on the weights and measures was it only has seventy-five thousand miles, and that it's still in fairly good shape.
What does it mean, recommend better care?
Uh, he did indicate that they probably could wash it more, and he indicated that there was a couple deans that he had offered to fix, but that Janet did not want done, I assume because of the cost.
Okay.
Just, you know, little things like that regarding. The prosecutor, we have the HR requests, which I put up in HR, and then he had wanted an additional thirty-one thousand in the sixteen budget, so that he could give 1.5 raises in January as well, which we've talked about there. The recorder did not make any requests. The clerk of courts, aside from the salary issue, which I believe we talked about and settled on, she wanted four thousand increase to the contractual service line, and two thousand increase to the postage, both of those were sort of-
What happened to the eighty thousand for the raises that they gave?
That's where, in my notes, they're going to fund those excesses from the title. So, next year, towards the end of the year, there would also be a request for them to transfer from the title, and for you to amend their budget, however much they're not able to absorb, you know, depending on personnel moves and that type of thing. Within the courts, common pleas, Judge Pittman, go ahead.
Clerk of courts?
Yes.
Did you say the two thousand postage was already done, or what?
Uh, they had wanted it, just because they feel postage rates are going up, and they're gonna have more.
Uh-huh.
That, that was their request, that they would like to see more.
Okay, so nothing's been done yet?
Nothing has been done, none of these have been moved, that's why, anything on here is, is not in the draft.
But in a case like this, Todd, I mean, it's kind of understood that if they have more postage, I mean, we will-
We would move it up, yeah, that's what our contingencies are for. In common pleas, Judge Pittman wanted an additional part-time person, and then her and Judge Berger in particular, their computerization funds are not able to continue covering their court view fee shares. Judge Pittman, though, had indicated that they were working on a solution. If that solution would fail, I think it's gonna come back to the general fund to do it, but I think until, we wait and see if their solution works, but that's, were those two requests. And muni courts, they had wanted the visiting fee judge expenses, and the fee expenses, which is what they use, like translators, they had wanted those increased. To be more in line with what they spent this year, in my comments, they'll indicate this year they spent a lot, just, and it's not, I mean, they just had a couple cases that really had those increased costs. Typically, what we do is budget the average, it's always easier to put money in, it's more difficult if you put too much in to take it back and move it elsewhere, they get upset by that.
That's for sure.
So, it's some extraordinary items, kind of, this year?
Right, yeah, this year was very, very high. This year was one of the highest, I went back like eight years, and they spent more in fee expenses this year than all those years. Domestic, they've given us the big sheet, that's the personnel merit adjustments, they'd like to move a part-time to full-time, and then she had the dues, her dues went up, that she wanted adjusted. And juvenile, they have a recording system, I do have a slot for that in the capital budget, their system is failing, we just had to buy an additional computer, because of the hard drive, et cetera, even with that replacement, though, the whole system is still very outdated. Brian is working with them on seeing what all needs done in terms of wiring and location, those type of things. He indicated their air system is just too big, it causes all that noise and whatnot. Joanne was going to look into that. A digital recording system, he does not need that for next year, but he indicated that's the way the courts are going, and juvenile will have to have their own separate system, since they have the juvenile records.
Is that all constant, given what the last communication between him and Brian? Judge Berger was very upset about the equipment failing?
This, the, the top line there would be the total replacement of that, which will probably be thirty to fifty thousand, to, to take out the old and begin putting in new. And those are based on rough figures, that I believe TMI had had.
Where is that, where's that fifty thousand figure, I'm looking at your-
I don't have one yet, because they don't have the figures, that, that's roughly what I had heard, but again, it wasn't an actual quote, so that's why I hesitated to put it in.
Okay.
The air conditioning system, Judge Berger indicated that people are constantly outworking on it. That system, though, is maintained by the juvenile detention center, which is the Portage Joga joint, so that request should probably go through that process for review.
Well, what's he saying, and then it's somewhere-
He's just saying it's always breaking down.
They need a new-
We probably just need a new system.
Okay.
If you're always repairing the old one every month, you know, maybe it's just time to do a new one. Those are his court view costs, again, my comment is whether Judge Pittman's solution is going to, to work for those or not. Residential treatment, he had wanted forty-five thousand, JFS currently helps do that program. The question was, if they were going to continue, and could they do a little bit more? The board was gonna approach Kelly Jo on that, I can, I can get ahold of her as well. And then rehiring a clerical position, this one I do recommend. Judge Berger, when he came, he moved a bunch of people around, he moved a bunch of duties around, they tried to do without a position, they tried to go down a position. He has since come back, since this budget was made, and said, "It's, it's not working, we need to hire this person," and in fact, they did hire the person.
Okay.
So, that's-
They did hire?
They did hire, so that's a rough, and that was taken out, their budget was actually lower, I recommend it be put back in. Putting that back in will simply take them to where they were last year, it won't be an increase from last year's. Adult probation, they had asked for three positions, we did fund two, so that fifty-five would be the third one, and then they had asked for additional money, so that they could do pay adjustments as well. They didn't make a specific dollar request, though. The coroner did not make any requests. The sheriff did not make any requests, we do need to discuss a couple of things, that when we come back to this, regarding the new sales tax money. Tax map did not make any requests. The board of elections, they had requested that they think their staff deserves five percent, that fourteen thousand is what that would cost, on top of the 1.5 they already are getting. They indicated they wanted more postage, based on some changes they feel are coming, plus postal rate increases. And then their phones, the, the new phones plug into computers, secretary of state said they can't go into the voting computer, so to speak, so they actually need two computers, one for their phones and internet, and one for their board of elections work. Data processing, they also wanted a new position, they wanted increased training, they wanted increased software maintenance costs, two of the software contracts, most items we had bid, five-year contracts, in with the costs, those two did not, so those are gonna be annual, and need increased for. And he would also like to give his staff tablets and new chairs. And then the public defender just had some minor increases to training and travel, to cover the increased costs of getting the death, death, capital case certifications that his staff needs to be able to defend those cases, and then some miscellaneous to supplies and photocopying. And then we have all the outside agencies, the APL, Portage Development Board, OSU Extension, RPC, the parks just wanted a land donation, they did not actually ask for money this year, the Small Business Development Center, and then the TID.
So, when I look at the outside agencies, nothing has been set aside, other than for APL and OSU Extension?
In the current draft, that's correct. And then some things I said to think about, the airport, the last two years, they have only paid interest, this year, they haven't even offered to pay interest on the loan, they simply have not responded. We sent an invoice out in September, we sent another reminder out, and asked for it to be due today, on the tenth, and we have not heard anything, nor have we received a check. They're hurting for funds, they had that Hayner blowdown that still has not been rebuilt, and then, of course, any, any extension of the runway or whatnot, would largely fall to the county to either plan or fund. So, those are some things, I don't think in sixteen we need to do anything per se, although the Hayner may be something, but those are things for the board to think about, do you want to start addressing them now, or do we want to wait till it all falls apart and comes to us in one big lump later?
Yeah, I thought they were getting money from somewhere, and I don't know where I got that.
They got FAA grant to do, to resurface their existing runway.
Okay.
And that's, they actually paid the match on that, which is largely why they couldn't make their interest payments this time, and that largely wiped out their cash balance.
Todd, you mentioned, maybe you're gonna go back to the sheriff, but Deb this morning had shared a report that-
She did give me a copy.
Yeah, and I asked her to get you a copy of that.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll deal with that officially tomorrow, but you both should have one, because I would assume this is going to be, never assume, right, but it could be some additional costs at the jail as a result of that inspection.
We had talked a couple years ago, maybe last year, beginning last year, about the county creating, grant may not be the right word, but a program where we could help townships get some projects done that they had on their wish list, but can't afford to do. We talked about setting aside some money in the capital budget, and then every year, the townships would apply, and you would choose which projects to help fund. That currently is not in this budget, but that's something to think about. County funded development projects, again, when you start talking, the airport and those type of things, do we want to begin incorporating some of those items into our budget planning? The Freedom Railroad Line, we had talked about the possibility of doing away with it, since no one wants it, that would require some, some contact with Smurfet Stone, well, it used to be Smurfet Stone, I don't know if that's still a name. They are the only entity that currently still uses that rail spur. If we were to do away with it, we would want to work in conjunction with them to help, you know, ease them off of it, but do we want to begin that process, or are we satisfied with maintaining it? Space assignments in the admin building, we did the tours, we didn't get quite to everywhere, but there are entities that want space, there are entities that have space, those are some things to think about, whether the board wants to reassign some locations.
How prepared are we for this onslaught with the board of elections? That made me think of that, not only in the physical changes, but-
One of the ideas, even if, if no remodeling was done, I think we're gonna be okay. They indicated that they could store, I believe, ninety of like the hundred and fifty in their current location, where they currently store voting machines. One of the suggestions that Joanne and I had been talking about, and I think she brought to the board, was moving JFS's playrooms, isn't it, the meeting, meeting rooms, to the WIC portion. That does free up some space on the first floor, that I believe could be used for additional storage of those machines as well.
Was that, was that the problem, that Amy was talking about, those dangers?
Yesterday, that they weren't informed about that?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm wondering, is that it?
I'm not sure.
Well, I think they're building a wall with a door. Well, no, they may be, but Amy, she at the WIC was not told.
She had some concern that it was happening already.
Right.
That the visiting folks were going somewhere, or-
I didn't think the actual visitations were taking place, Amy knew the idea was there.
Okay.
But she also knew that any other idea would be presented to, Amy had asked if they could take it over as well at one point. So, that, that was all discussions that were coming to the board, which is part of what the admin space type thing is.
I'm implying the ointment here, but I think board of elections is anticipating some expansion, renovation work downstairs, you know, essential for that election. Will you authorize Jan, uh, Joanne-
To do a cut?
-to come up with some kind of recommendation for space for them, she may have that.
Has she talked with you about that, Todd?
We've talked, the board had, had the idea of getting an architect to come and look at what walls could be torn out, et cetera. The only concern there is, even, even if we had a magic wand, getting any renovation done by March is almost impossible.
And you don't want it going on while-
And that's exactly right, so, especially on a presidential year, so the thought was, even if we did remodel, would we want to wait till after November of next year to even begin?
I think that'll come as quite a shock to them, I think they're anticipating some changes, I don't, and I don't know where they've gotten, what they would have meant with the architect, I hope that happened. One of the ideas was, when you're coming down the main hallway on the first floor, close that off.
Right.
Put a wall there with a door.
Yeah.
That way, we could have all the hall space as well. That, I would think, could be done rather expeditiously. That should be easy.
That could, their only concern is they have to be able to see everybody, and so, that, that is still part of the idea, but you have to open up the wall, so that they can see through, otherwise, they have to have additional staff to be in this room, this room, this room, this room, this room, and that's their nightmare.
No.
They want it to be more open, so that fewer staff can still supervise, you can't have an area where a voter can go and not be seen.
Well, I, I think we gave a commitment to the board of elections when they were in here, that we were going to work with them and accommodate what their needs were, so that they could have that presidential election, and I don't know what that's gonna shift out to.
Yeah.
Again, Joanne was asked to-
My understanding is the election itself, they could do in the space they have.
They don't do that, faith and-
Yeah. Is it the ideal? No, but they could get it done. The big concern is the storage of the equipment, they can't store all the equipment in the space that they currently have, and that's where we were looking for additional rooms to let them store.
So, maybe you could be closed off the hallway, which would be fairly easy to do, use that part for storage temporarily, until the rest of the design.
Yeah, I don't know, those are being worked out. Their original proposal, their original request had been for a new building.
Oh, yes.
They very much wanted the good sense-
They wanted a good, oh, yeah.
-building. But in further talks, they thought they could at least manage with the space, it's not ideal.
Sure.
While they could get it done, it wouldn't be the perfect world.
Okay.
But we were gonna bring in an architect, I thought, to see if we could make some accommodations of this space to make it better.
I think Joanne was, yeah.
Yeah, Joanne was working with them.
Todd, may I ask you, I'm, I'm going back to the outside agencies, and, of course, you know that I've asked this one, on RPC, they were, they were given forty thousand for that part-time planner, is that not even in there to continue?
Well, what, the way I did this, when we gave the forty, the idea was, they would hire a part-time worker, they would come back and present what all additional that had gotten the county, and then the board would decide whether to continue funding. They only recently hired the person within the last couple months, they spent about seven thousand of that forty thousand, so my thought is, they still have thirty-three going into next year to continue paying that person with, and then I, I was under the impression the board still wanted them to come back and present their ideas.
We don't have the thirty-seven in there to-
Well, that, they had to roll over, it's in their-
Well, they, they normally-
They were already given that forty, they were given the whole lump.
Well, they want that, but they also wanted that to be a full-time position, so-
And that would be the next step, then, is moving it to full-time, in which case, then, they would need sixty-seven thousand for this year.
Well, hopefully, when, when they get grants, if they administer them, there'll be administrative fees. I think Todd talked to that when he was in here.
Yeah, some have, some don't.
Some don't.
It, it just depends.
So, that's sixty-seven plus the thirty-three they have left, so they're thinking that maybe the grant writer's gonna be paid a hundred thousand a year, a full-time grant writer?
When it, when it all was said done, Todd said he needed sixty-seven if that person was gonna be made full-time.
Once the person gets up and going, it would be sixty-seven total?
But that thirty-three-
That was unclear, as to how much of the money they were rolling over, and-
See, that needs to be clear.
There were some fuzzy issues.
Right. Well, wouldn't you give them direction on that? I mean, if they started the person, and allowed to go full-time, how much would they need, let's put it that way?
Well, when they gave us their sheet, Todd and, is it Faith, or am I thinking of the wrong person?
Lisa?
Lisa.
Wait a minute, yeah.
They thought they'd already spent around twenty thousand of the forty, because Todd and Lisa were doing grant work. My argument was, well, that, you guys are already paid out of your money, this money was for an actual person, not just for grant work.
Right.
So, the money that you've, or the hours that you two put into grant work should not be counted against the forty.
Right.
Only the pay of the new person should come out of that. So, in their mind, they've used anywhere from twenty-five to thirty of that forty. In my mind, at least, they've only used around seven.
Okay.
So, it depends on-
We shouldn't be paying them to do the grant work, because we already pay them through our dues.
I guess my question is just, how much does a full-time grant writer, what are we gonna pay a full-time grant-
I believe annually, their idea is around the sixty-seven.
Okay.
With benefits, may come to around seventy, which, the other aspect of that is, when the grant writer was originally talked about, we'd received proposals for anywhere from thirty to sixty, and at that time, the grant, or the board did not want to put that much into the effort.
Mm-hmm.
You know, sixty-seven thousand is a good job, and certainly RPC is capable of doing it, the question is whether a county employee would have liked that also, those are things to think about. At the time we did it, it was not envisioned that we would be doing full-time.
If we did hire or pay for a full-time, would the administrative fees that they receive for those grants that give administrative fees, would that come back to us then?
Well, that was the, that's what needs worked out, is how is that all going to work? If there's admin in a grant, do we get reimbursed back from the sixty-seven we give? The other, when we gave the forty, we just gave it. I asked the board at the time, if you guys wanted timesheets or anything, and you said no. The other way to do it is, you know, have them submit timesheets showing how much they've worked, and then we reimburse each, each pay each month, whatever, up to sixty-seven. Under that system, if there was admin in a grant, it would be deducted from what they're requesting. That would be one way to handle that.
A little more simplistic, if, if we're in agreement, they need a full-time, they would like a full-time person, that is, serving all the townships, the municipalities for that matter, but mostly the townships, because they don't have the funds to have a grantsman on their respective staff. So, if we, I don't know where we're going there, if we can do that, I would think that just equates to, what is it going to cost to have a full-time grants person? And then those type of things you're talking about-
Administrative charges.
-it could be worked out, in a sense of, if they are bringing in admin money, if that has to come back to the county or-
Well, they would, they would not for sure be allowed to give the admin money to the county, the question is whether they could reimburse some of the sixty-seven back to the county, the answer to that is probably no as well. The reality is, we would probably deduct whatever admin they earned from the next year's allocation, if you just wanted to do it that way, similar to what we do with the APL legal fees.
But if they add- But if they add...
Whatever they spend, we just take off from what we were going to give them.
And I don't know on a grant, if the admin would be a pass-through to the entity that they were writing the grant for. In other words, if a township...
And that becomes, that's between the township and the RPC as to how they write it.
Yeah, exactly. You've got that element too.
Yeah, because often you need like an inspection, which the county worker would need to inspect.
Isn't the admin fee for administering the grant?
It's, grants are largely different. Some grants, any type of inspection work, planning work, design work, is counted against the admin. Some grants take inspection and design and include it as part of your project cost, and then there's admin. And some grants don't offer admin. It's just up to, you know, each grant's different as to what you can charge and what you can't. Some grants, even within admin, you're allowed to charge salary, but maybe you're not allowed to charge health benefits. So you're allowed up to twenty percent, but you still can't charge any health benefits. Some grants allow you to do your salary plus a hundred fifty percent to cover things like electricity and all that type of stuff.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's, it's the grant, the grant giver sets those bounds, and they're wildly different depending on each grant.
You know, since there are so many unknowns here, and we gave them forty for last year, and we thought that was going to be used last year, but they didn't get a chance to hire anybody, so they just started using that forty, and they've got thirty-three of that left. Why can't we just say, okay, maybe a full-time grant writer, and this may not be true, this could be like a pilot, and we could adjust it later, would be fifty-five thousand, and then they've got thirty-three thousand going toward that, so we'll give them an additional twenty-two, and just see how that shakes out with the admin costs and...
That's a way to go.
You know, because we don't know.
That's a good suggestion.
And, and just let Todd know that we can always adjust this because, I mean, this grant writer may be just bringing all kinds of money and...
That would be nice.
That's the dream.
That's the dream, I know, I know, that's what we're wanting.
I think they were, they were, at the point we started talking about it, when they were in, I think Todd told us, they were going out and working with the sheriff on some...
Yes.
My one fear, and it's happened in a couple instances, when you get grant writer, everybody
Stops writing.
Says, ah, I don't have to do it anymore.
That's right, that's...
And I know there are some on this list that actually we worked on, and that doesn't mean they couldn't help enhance the sheriff's dare grants or whatnot, but the idea was, those who are writing grants continue to write those grants. We don't want to pay additional money to simply get what we've already gotten. You know, the idea was, we're paying to get, to get things we've never gotten. So for whatever that's worth, the idea, the hope was though, that county employees will continue writing the current grants that we are doing.
Yeah, so there are some of the grants, I would think, like you're talking about there, that might be a pretty, I hate to use the word easy, but easy grant to get.
Some of them, you fill out the application and get it, yeah.
Right, but others might be more, you know, tied to someone with the expertise to actually with writing skills, to go after it, to analyze what it is they need and...
And that's what we want a grant writer for.
Yeah, well, that would be lucky in a way.
Yeah.
Can we make that known somehow, Todd, I mean, or is that futile?
We had expressed that to RPC. In fact, we'd expressed that to RPC and NDS when they were both looking at doing it jointly. The reality is though, if, if an elected official asks Todd to write a grant, he's going to do it regardless of whether it was one they'd written before or not. You know, I mean, he's in a awkward spot, he's not going to tell, well, no, I'm not going to do that one because you were.
Southside, I think.
So there's just certain realities to it.
I think it's southside. Is that noise outside?
Yeah, it is.
Car alarm or something, I don't know.
It's outside.
So, go back to the very bottom of the page. You know, the, the, the board at one time had revised its org chart.
Yes.
I'm not sure that holds up necessarily. Also, I gave you an amount for salary, which I assume you are still working on that salary adjustments.
So where are we, Todd?
The last bottom two lines, just things to think about.
Oh, okay.
With the org chart, some of it, the way, the way we're currently organized makes it difficult for certain departments to help others. That's something to think about with the lean thing, is do we want ten departments? Or do you want eight departments with more, more integration? Those are things to think about. Again, that's, we're not going to sell that today, and we don't even need to talk about it today, but those are things for the board to keep in its back of its head, is does it, we want to reorganize its own departments.
I think we definitely want to be more lean.
Right, no question.
And I, and I think to achieve more lean, a reorganization might be needed. You know, that's just my opinion in that regard.
Sure.
And then the last thing, we talked about this last year, you know, particularly like where the APL, Portage Development Board, RPC with the grant writer, attaching some kind of performance measures, just, just even vague ones, saying, you know, here's some money, but here's also some things we'd like to see you improve upon or add to your service, or whatever the case may be.
Absolutely.
For the board to think about as we write the award letters. You could decide the amount today, and we would still have time in the mid-January, February to decide what, if we want to make any of those recommendations.
I think one of the, one of the truest forms of that was when Cooperative Extension came in, to listen to what they were saying they, they got, they had gotten accomplished, and they had the statistics to back them up.
And that was nice, yeah. It gave you measurable...
And I think, right, I'm defending RPC again, I think they can, you know, they had a late start with that, but I think they can provide most of anything that would be asked for to show...
Well, they did give us a start on their grant working with them.
The APL unfortunately has been just absolutely evasive in the sense of...
Yeah, I had a recommendation to go into executive session to discuss a quick item regarding them. I don't know if you want to do that now, if you want to go back, and when we get to them, do it at that point. But I know, I know that's one that has frustrated the board. And it frustrates the APL too, I think, when you went to their meeting, they're like, well, wait, we're doing everything we can, you know, I mean, it's...
Yeah.
We can go ahead and go into executive session, get the...
Don't do it, we should just be silent.
So I can't, I think, oh, yes.
Amy, could you come in?
If you know something we need to know, we need to...
It's an idea, it may not, may not work, may work.
The, this is a digression, but I'm going to mention it, because you had this on here, like the TID, that...
That was never mentioned.
I'm, I'm still amiffed by that.
Unless we don't...
Yeah. It wasn't mentioned.
Well, you know, when we first talked, talked to them, we said their, you know, I was emphatic, and I think it's on tape, there, the county has no money, no money to support this. And then you enumerated all the different functions that evidently they had talked to you about, oh, the county could do this and...
In that letter, yeah, in the, in the agreement, that was the first we ever heard.
And you were right, those all have costs associated with them.
We need a motion for...
I'll make a move to go into executive session.
Oh, second.
Regarding...
Personnel compensation.
Personnel compensation.
We'll call, thank you.
Vicky?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to exit executive session.
Second. We'll call, thank you.
Vicky?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
There are action?
No, there is not.
Okay.
Todd?
Okay, are we starting over?
Yeah, so I don't know, that's, that's the entirety of the list. If we want to go back to the beginning, and the board can...
Okay.
I can give my thoughts, or the board can give its thoughts, and we can start moving down. Back up to the motor pool, again, my comment, their current facility makes it difficult, in my opinion, to continue adding staff to. There's a bigger discussion there than of, are we going to build a new facility? Are we going to try and buy a used one? I was disappointed when we lost out on this one just down the road here. You know, one of the thoughts in the back of my head is, if we do add onto the jail, would it be conceivable to add there, since the sheriff is largely the majority of the repairs that are done? So those are all options, but in my opinion, that discussion needs to come before additional staff.
And you know, another thing, Todd, we've got Water Resources doing some maintenance. What other departments do we...
Mickey does all his at their facility.
Yeah.
And then Bill does all his.
Yeah.
And both Mickey and Bill have offered to take some of the Water Resources cars. One of Joe's problems is he doesn't have what they call a big, big car bay.
Right. It seems to me like if we could work together amongst those four departments, we could figure this out.
Get better service, yeah. So that was my regard there. Did the board want to leave that at zero or increase by the...
I suppose, it just, I'm trying to recall what Joe, when he's come in here, what he has said he needs a person, but was it predicated on him having to go out more, or he can't go out? Does anybody recall?
Well, he does go out to vehicles if there's a dead battery or if there's, I do know he comes out.
But was that his point? He, he should not be doing that as much as sending someone to do it, and then he would be able to do...
Well, there's three, there's three guys there, right?
Yeah, Joe and three others, yeah.
Does Joe have to be the one to go out?
Joe and three others, so there are four.
Four, four employees currently.
Yeah.
I know he has been getting over, our fleet is aging.
Yeah.
We hadn't done repairs in a few years. We are getting back to that, this year's capital budget, we have ten vehicles currently budgeted.
Oh, yes.
Five for the sheriff and five for the remainder of the fleet, which, again, getting back to a regular vehicle replacement schedule, I think, would help Joe immensely.
Right.
Because he wouldn't have, you know, some of these repairs that he has to make.
Well, we could, we should do those.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's the idea, that part of the reason we have a large one though is, we have a lot to do.
Right.
And we wanted to pay cash instead of constantly going to debt for it. But again, I, my recommendation is not fund that position now, but I do, I don't want to say, don't fund it, don't do anything, I think we need to engage in that conversation of...
And I think we need to engage in the conversation of collaborating.
Yeah.
We've talked with, with them before, we've talked with, this isn't the first time this has come up.
Yeah, it always seems to fizzle, though, that's, we've...
And why is that?
Well...
Money, a lot, money and some of it is just, there's...
No, there's a variety of reasons, plus Mickey has, I don't want to just say because he has a collective bargaining agreement, but he does, and that's a very, I think he sees that as a very separate...
Yeah. Well, and the big key is when Mickey, when Mickey's vehicle breaks, he wants his repaired.
Exactly, yeah.
He doesn't want...
Anything else has to wait, you know, and that's the idea as well, can this one wait?
We even, we even explored possibly putting the motor pool out at Water Resources because they have that beautiful garage, and I think at the time, that building, they use that mostly just to...
That's storage, yeah.
Storage.
Heated storage, basically.
Not, they can't work on them there, but, but the county owns property there, so there could be some marriage, if you will, of that.
Right.
Maybe build a facility there and attach it to that.
Right.
And when you did your request for proposals, that was the location they were...
Yes, right.
Thinking about it.
Planning around. The, the costs are high. I know the building down here was two-hundred-and-seventy thousand. Talking of building is million, you know, a million and a half or more.
But Joe said that this didn't have the lifts either.
Well, that's, so, and that's the, nothing we buy is going to be perfect.
So we're better, and, and you're right about the sheriff.
But that was the idea, is if we could have there, yeah.
Of vehicles, so it probably should be built.
And while they've already mobilized and building, that may help with cost.
Right, well, we own that property, and if we, and that's what they were looking at, possibly building something out there. There's even some cosmetics or drawings, if you want to look at them.
So there's some ideas there in conjunction with the jail addition, is, if that could get talked into it.
Sure.
But those are things for the board to think about.
Sure, that's, that's a good point.
Human resource, my, my recommendation highlighted there is not to do any of those items until it's further talked about, and maybe that's where the board's going to with Denise and, and Janet, coming back to you.
Right.
I was unaware of that meeting. I don't know what your current thoughts are to do right now. We could add some money to the contingency for whatever eventuality comes about, obviously, whatever way you go is going to cost some money. But I don't know that we necessarily need to pick a specific one right now.
Well, we did, we did this by turn, right?
Sixty-five thousand.
Sixty-five thousand was committed to the prosecutor.
Now, this other, Janet and Denise were supposed to talk, and then Janet was going to work on a job description for this clerical position.
And bring it back.
And I'm not sure, did she give you the forty-two thousand? I don't know where that came from.
No, that would just be a standard county clerical...
The other was, again, and I think this is the essence and the pinnacle, is Denise and Janet arriving at a strategic, a plan here as to what is going to be done as this new effort. And I, you know, we can check with them and see when they're going to be ready.
Where they are, yeah.
Bring that and present it here.
Now, with the...
They're not going to get any money until that happens.
Yeah. With the prosecutor, were they going to charge time to the HR department? Or are we adding sixty-five to his line three-hundred budget?
He wanted the entire amount from the, repaying the director, and I said, no, we can't do that. So the sixty-five was a compromise, and I, I don't know, I would imagine that would go to his budget. Depends on what they give us back as to what, how they're going to configure this and how they're going to do it.
Are we going to wait on that until we get that figured out?
Well, the sixty-five is committed.
Why not put it in contingency, and then when the, when it's all worked out, we'll know which budget to put it in.
Sure.
Is that how the board wants it to do now?
Well, I'm, I'm sure he wants it in his budget, and that's what...
Because at one time there was talk of them charging their time.
I hate to renege on that.
Right.
Then let's put it in his budget directly and take it out of here.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would think that's what he's anticipating. Vicky, you were here?
Yes, I was, that's what I said, we did it, it's committed.
Okay. You're still going to have to have an MOU, we're still going to have to delineate what, who's doing what.
Okay, you say either way, HR at one time was moving off the sixth floor, I think that should be revisited.
Yeah, the...
We were thinking about moving them up here, right?
Correct. Paul had a plan. It needed to wait on the phones because we didn't want to pay at the time, have AT&T Correct. Paul had a plan. It needed to wait on the phones because we didn't want to pay at the time to have AT&T come out and move the old phones.
Right.
The sixth and seventh floor, both are new phones now, so they could come up here. I don't know if that was, if the board still wanted to follow through with that. At one time it made sense because it's possible they could get some clerical help up here. One of the things that currently happens is when someone goes to hand an application, they have to get up and interrupt work, whereas now people are going to stand right at the desk that's already manned.
My purpose would be to have them go up here. It is detrimental to get off those, that elevator.
Well, that's the other thing is that's, that's your first impression of the county is when you go to apply, you're like, oop.
It's just absolutely horrible. So I, my, my opinion of bringing them up here.
So what is the discussion? What did we just decide?
We were talking about my comment that at one time HR was going to move off the sixth floor. And go to the seventh floor. I wasn't sure if the discussions with Vic, if it had them going out to his building or not.
No.
But I think, I think getting the two of them in a better trafficked area, number one, helps with just security, number two, helps with just flow, workflow.
And if we think that's a good idea, which probably is, we have to be aware that Brian's going to want to claim the whole of sixth floor.
Well, that's true, but.
My next goal is to get them off the sixth floor and that could be storage for border elections. And then we don't have to remodel.
You're right, but it is appalling, I think, to have anyone get off that elevator.
Look at that sixth floor.
Well, and to have them, if they're here for a job or anything else, I would think it'd be a deterrent to want them.
And the only holdup to do prior to this was the phones.
The phone, yeah.
Yeah, so we should do this.
So there's no holdup to that then?
No, so can we go ahead and do that?
Do we have the office space already cleared?
Paul had worked with Deb and Joanne. There were offices and there was even, they had worked out where files were going to be stored, et cetera. I didn't have that whole plan, but it, there was one. The board actually done it, did a journal entry a while ago.
Okay.
That approved it all. We can see if that can be dug out. Because before it was three of them, now it is only the two.
Why don't we, is that a right?
Sure.
Okay, good. And we need to inform them.
Yeah, I can let Janet know that the board is wanting that to be revised and then.
On the human resources, we're going to move the sixty-five to the prosecutor's budget. And put in contingency the forty-two?
Yes.
Yeah, you're, you're spending more money is all I want to point out. This is a more expensive solution we were hoping to save.
Well, you know why? Because the anticipated revenue now is greater than we thought it was.
Well, the thing is though, Todd, Paul was wanting another clerical person. That was.
And that's true, so that, correct. That would have all balanced out, yeah.
The, the other, I still want this MOU, everything delineated, so I don't know if we can put it in his budget, but not, I don't want to go in there and release it right now until we.
Just saying it's a free.
We can, we can hold it in contingency then until that's worked out, if that's what you want to do. I don't know, I didn't see a journal entry that actually committed it.
Oh, yeah, we did one.
We didn't commit the clerical.
No, 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 we didn't, no, we did not.
We committed the prosecutor so we could put that in his budget for sixty-five.
But I think what Maureen was saying is she wanted to see an MOU before.
I want to see what.
Can we put that in contingency too then?
Is that what you want to do? And then when the MOU is done, we'll move it on?
That's fine, yeah.
Okay.
He knows that we passed it, so that's fine.
I will, well.
Now, this next one, you know, this security administration, I, wow. What, what's the best? I mean.
It's hard to know without having the figures on the buttons, the cameras, the lockdowns, the metal.
It depends on how many we have.
Well, we're not going to make a funding decision now because we don't have all the information.
If we would, no, but if, if you're intending for this to be done this year, we somehow do have to set something aside.
Right, right.
For the eventuality, you know, forty to fifty would more than cover all the panic, cameras, locked doors, that type of thing. But it doesn't get you anywhere close to having a person in the building. If you're talking of also wanting a person in the building and doing those, you're talking a hundred to a hundred and twenty. If you're talking of doing one or the other, I'm not sure where the discussions.
Can we come up with a figure of doing, is it the panic buttons, the cameras?
And the locked doors.
And the locked doors, or the metal.
I don't know, that's going to be, you're right, but I suppose that.
The panic buttons will be very cheap. Five, six thousand will get you a lot there.
I'd almost like us to have a couple of officers be the security guards or whatever, roaming the building. And maybe that's not good, maybe that's not a good approach.
Private armed, is that just for one officer, eighty-five thousand?
That would, kind of one and a half, the way they overlap, so it's not always the exact, in other words, you're not hiring Bob. You're hiring them to fill the spot and somebody comes in and it may be a different person in the evening as in the morning. But that roughly is what a contract costs to cover from, and that's based on, similar to what we did at Riddle Block.
Were you here when Kelly Joe, yes, I think you were, was talking about how her workers are very distraught.
And I, that's where I think the lock doors will help them immensely. You know, they have people just wander down their halls and you're sitting at your desk working and all of a sudden there's a person. And that, that causes, I think, a lot of discomfort.
Sure.
Whereas if you had doors, particularly to the old building, there's the fire gates, you could put, you know, scan, badge doors there, I think. And that would alleviate a lot of that concentration.
Was she working on any of these figures?
She was looking, she's looking at all of this. She was getting metal detector quotes.
Can we, does she have, can we get those from her now?
Well, some of it, again, it depends on location, so we need to give her more information. Again, there are certain places like to add, to add a panic button to this desk is extremely cheap because you guys are already wired there. To add a panic button down at the end of the old building may cost more because there aren't any even wires, so we have to wire the whole thing down.
Let me ask you though, what is a panic button going to do? When it comes to here with a gun, I just, I'd like to know. So I hit the panic button and two days.
After you're shot and dead, someone's going to come.
Well, here's the thing, there, the, if somebody's going to come shooting, none of these solutions are going to do anything.
I agree with you.
Some of it though, is just we get agitated people and it is a comfort to know if I do push this, at least somebody is on their way. It helps to keep that person calm.
But are they on their way? Ravenna will not respond to this building.
They go to the sheriff's office. The sheriff doesn't get the video to do it with, but they do call him. Joanne's made that clear. If you push a panic button, it rings at their dispatchers and they will send someone. That person may have to come all the way from Infirmary Road.
Right.
But there's a lot of rumor that the buttons don't even work. The buttons do work. They ring the sheriff. At one time they also lit up in the room downstairs and told you exactly which office. Now, that's what the sheriff doesn't know. He knows there's a problem in the admin building.
He doesn't know where.
He comes to the admin building, they still have to stop in that room to read where it is. We could get that fixed where it actually told him what room at his place as well. That would cost some money. Joanne was working on that price.
Would it not be better to get back to the, you only have one entrance to this building, that metal detector and an officer? I mean, really, if you're talking about the best protection. And it just seems to be.
I think we should probably put forty to fifty thousand in contingency. And then when we figure out what we want to do, the money will be there.
Two years.
I'd say make it sixty.
You know, if you're talking about a metal detector and a person and one entrance.
Panic buttons and cameras.
I was only talking about panic buttons, cameras and lock doors.
Okay, well, Maureen said metal detector.
Well, I, I don't know, you said Joanne is.
And one entrance. Were you talking about one entrance, Kathleen or?
Well, no, I wasn't. I was talking about like on the second and third floor where the jobs and family services, where that metal door is. Put doors there that are locked and they use a key like we, to get through. Give them that kind of security. If we have a metal detector, we also have to have people to manage. You can't just have the. So until we decide, we could start, you know, with these three things and then because we'll have a bigger carryover, we might be able to add to it later. So you're thinking sixty instead of?
Well, I suppose if we're going to do this incrementally, if you're going to do the lock, the doors for two, two and three?
You could do it on other floors as well. I mean, even here on the seventh floor, you know, right at the end of the things, you could put a set of lock doors with a buzzer that Julie could buzz people in once they know what's going on. We can do as much or as little.
Sure, but we need a cost of that. If you start putting doors up or glass doors, I'm sure this is going to have a price tag.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And sixty thousand isn't going to buy anything.
Now, are these bulletproof glass we're talking about?
Well, that's where, again, that's more cost. I mean, that's, you decide whatever you want. To, to be honest, a lot of our employees just have a disconcerting feeling. I, I had it happen to me before our door was put up. I was getting into our safe and a gentleman came in and asked where blah, blah, blah was.
And so entering the.
And here I am, now, he wasn't violent, he wasn't, and I mean, he was just very friendly, but just, just that notion of somebody walking, you know, you start looking over your shoulder all the time.
Can the cloud be issued? And you're right. I mean, that would be an enhancement.
So those help, those would help immensely just with the traffic.
We have nothing, but you know, I'm, I'm relating to the type of inane tragedy that occur.
Right.
And they do. They seem to occur every week.
Yeah.
And I don't know what you do about that, but I'd hate to have that happen and us not have anything in place. I'd hate to have it happen, period.
Right, right, right.
But, and not have anything.
So what, should we put in contingency?
I don't know. I would think if, you know, sixty to start, but you're right.
And then when we get the carryover, then we can add more if we need to.
I would think. Is that okay with both of you?
Okay.
And we should dispatch, I don't know, I guess, Joanne to get the prices to.
Yeah, well, you do have another meeting scheduled for early January.
Yes, right.
To, to talk again about some of these. I can remind you and Joanne to maybe have some of those ready for that meeting.
Yeah, well, we need, we need the figures.
Well, again, it's hard for her to get figures if she doesn't know exactly where you want to, because a door here is going to cost different than a door there.
Well, yeah, but if we're going to do the, your suggestion is the type of doors you have going into your office.
Right.
So then that becomes, where are we going to put those? On every floor, on every, are we going to construct them? To have doors like that up here, we'd have to have a wall. I mean, a see-through.
Well, and I'd recommend, I, you know, I worked at the administration building of the city of Akron. And they have locked doors, the stairwell is locked. So if you go up the stairwell, you can't get in any floor except those floors with exits, which you weren't allowed to lock those, but any floor that doesn't have an exit, you're allowed to stop people from getting through. And then off the elevator, there's, you know, a space, but then there's doors with a phone to call someone. And that's how they've achieved security.
Where is that?
The admin building of the city of Akron. Of course, you know, the schools have the buzz-in camera with a buzz-in button. So it may behoove the board to go to a few areas and look at what other people are doing.
Right.
You know, the, the nice thing about those type of things is a one-time cost and then they last for ten or fifteen years that you can use out of them. The drawback is obviously they.
We can't decide anymore, right, no other than.
Yeah, yeah.
And I worry about the time because I have to be in Kent at twelve.
Oh, okay, okay.
All right, let's.
For the auditor, my recommendation, she had kind of wanted a lot of those, the overtime and the advertising for just in case.
Yeah.
My recommendation is to not put it in now, but if something should come up, she can address it and we can help.
Okay.
I don't know how the board feels. Okay.
And then if Joe was saying she, oh, no, Joe, our Joe.
Does not recommend.
I was thinking it was her Joe that didn't recommend the truck.
No, Joe, yeah, Dylan. Prosecutor, we're giving the sixty-five. He did have his extra in his line item. In his main salary lines though, we had only given enough to maintain the one point five that he had given in August. He had requested that he be given enough to give another one point five, which would be the thirty-one thousand.
But he gave that, right?
He already gave.
He already gave the.
He's given two. He's given two. He gave one at the beginning like everybody.
Let me ask you this, like we did with clerk of courts, what would it cost to, to be able to?
Maintain that?
I guess.
We, what we currently gave him, we'll maintain the raise he gave an artist.
Okay.
And, and he'll come out fine. His contention though is, everybody else is getting another one in January. He wants money to give one in January. That would cost thirty-one thousand.
Everyone else gave, gave one last January, one this January, which is only two.
Right.
He already gave two, one in January and one in.
He did?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, so he's, he's got two. He's going to give two.
No, he gave, he gave it January and he gave around July or August, I can't remember.
Another one.
So his people essentially have gotten three percent since January first of last year.
Okay, so, but he's got enough to maintain that?
The current budget allows him to maintain the second one. What he wanted.
Is another one point five in January.
He felt he should have gotten a one point five increase from what he currently has.
And no, no one else is going to have. I mean, I just.
Well, the, there, it gets, it's narrowed. You know, the clerk did hers, but we, we are not giving her extra to maintain them. She has to absorb it over time and use her funds. Data processing got increases above one point five percent, but those are coming out of the REA fund. So.
We're not giving anyone else.
No one else got more than one in one, correct.
This is a digression, but, and maybe because everybody's hourly, I've answered my own question. Does all the other departments pay overtime if someone works more than, what is it, the forty hours?
Well, you, you have to for non-exempt employees. The county pays extremely little overtime.
Well, no, I'm talking about, let's say, IT or not just IT or any of the other, the judges, do they pay overtime if someone is working?
You have the choice of doing overtime or comp time. Most give comp time right now.
It's only for non-exempt.
Not for non-exempt, yeah. Most, most give comp time.
Well, but I don't, I, I know that would be the rule, but I don't know that that's exactly what people appear to.
That happens in the treasures department, I know. They give comp time.
We, when I look at the overtime pay, there's very little. The sheriff has overtime pay, that's in his contract.
Oh, okay.
For non-bargaining unit members, we give very, very, I want to say almost zero, but there are a few instances, overtime pay. Now, we do give a lot of comp time adjustments for that, for that type of work.
So we're, we're really as a county not paying a lot of overtime?
Correct.
Other than the sheriff?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't know that.
No, we really do pay very little in overtime. So what are we doing? Are we giving extra or not? No, okay. The clerk of courts, again, they had asked for those two for just in cases. My, I don't see that they need it in their contractual. And again, postage, if rates do go up, we'll compensate people, I believe. So I wouldn't do anything right now if you're in agreement. Common pleas. And an adult probation, Judge Pittman had wanted us to take some of her extra and you guys decide how much to put into adult probation. And then she wanted additional for a part-time worker. My, my advice or recommendation is we gave adult probation enough to hire two people. If they wanted to do one and a half and use that for some raises, but they do have a lot extra. More so than a lot of other departments because we gave her two full-time. Let Judge Pittman keep all her original extra, but not put in for the part-time request. That would be my recommendation.
What about that pot, well, don't call it a pot of money, that other elected officials have to give, say, their merit and that.
That's where she wanted us to take, we gave it to Judge Pittman, but she is over common pleas and adult probation. She wanted us to split out how much to go to which. My advice is let's not add anything to adult probation other than the two positions.
Well, can't she split it out?
Why can't we give her the money and let her decide?
Well, she has that money. She has that money, yes.
Then I'm getting confused because there's.
She wanted more.
We, we are giving her money now for two positions.
Two, an adult probation.
But we talked about three when she was in here.
Correct, and we.
Can we not give her the money for that third one and when she does what she?
That would, to fund the third one, that's the fifty-five thousand or so.
Is that the probation?
Now, is that, the third one's for adult probation too?
Yes, all three were for adult probation.
Well, I'd be inclined, given when they came in here and.
You know, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we say we would do that eventually?
I thought we did.
Well, our goal was to get to a third maybe in seventeen. Originally, we only had one. And then you'll recall when we talked about the raises, there was an adjustment made to give them the second one. And that's how we got them to two.
Well, this is contingency contingent. I'd be inclined to do that, to just give a third person, the third, yes. And however the judge wants to administer that is up to the judge.
So are we talking adding fifty-five to adult probation?
You know, I don't recall the figure, Todd, if that's what you're thinking.
That'd be roughly, yeah.
That's for the third person.
So backing up to the courts.
Well, you might.
And is that.
You don't agree, then, fine.
Now, the court view cost, that's something entirely different.
Yeah. My advice, we have a contingency. If it comes to it, we could use some of the contingency for that this year and then put it in the budget for seventeen, should it come to it. My hope is that Judge Pittman's solution will work and it won't be on the general fund.
Do you know what Judge Pittman's solution is?
She's increasing fees of some sort.
Creating a separate fund and then they were going to.
I heard that they're not going to increase the fees.
Well, that's, I, when she was here, that was what was said, but I don't know if it's changed.
She'll bring it here. We are the ones that have to increase the fees.
You have to approve it, yeah.
Right, I mean, that's her idea, I think, to increase the fees.
So on the common pleas, if we give the fifty-five thousand under probation, adult probation, then we wouldn't give the fifteen for, under hers, right? Under common pleas?
That would be my.
Yeah, right, right, right.
The fifteens crossed out.
Right, no, we wouldn't. And the ten also because she's going to come up with a different proposal.
The only thing with court view, if, if it goes bust, I mean, we'll have, we have to pay.
Oh, yeah, there's no doubt, but I think.
Well, we paid twenty this year.
Yeah, like I said, or like Todd said, and she shared with us as a board.
Okay.
She's got a plan, but I'm sure when it's all together, she'll bring it to us and.
Sure, all right, we'll go from there.
Municipal court, again, my recommendation is we don't alter the budgets now, but there is that understanding if those things happen, they do get funded. I mean, we're not going to deny the courts.
What about, okay, but on the visiting judge, I would think a visiting judge cost would be up in common pleas, that's where the.
Every, every court has a visiting judge line.
Yeah, but they've had a visiting judge in common pleas.
And we've covered that, yeah, we've covered that because of Judge Dowdery, Doherty, I'm sorry.
Dowdery, Dowdery.
And that will continue to be the case.
Yeah. Oh, no, I wasn't questioning.
Yeah, that's out of the, yeah. Yeah, you're right. The common pleas has a line and that ballooned this year. I'm not sure if that will go into sixteen, how long it'll go, I should say. But again, that's part of what we do contingent, contingency for. The domestic courts, we gave her enough to cover eight of the eighteen that she's requesting. My thought is there's no elected official who got everything they want, wanted for raises. We're trying to get there over a few years.
Sure.
So we started off with that and then in seventeen, hopefully she'll be able to adjust more. I don't know if the board wanted to move that though.
No, what about giving her that position over full-time instead of part-time? Are you recommending not to do that either? I mean, not to give the, the merit, you know, as to what was requested.
I'm always reluctant to add staff, it's, it's very easy to do that and then your cost balloon. When I look at the proportion of workers in the various courts to caseloads, and that's not always a great way to do it, because some courts work harder for the same amount of cases, but. It doesn't look like they're understaffed per se in that regard.
Is she operating with fewer staff than she had, like?
About three or four years ago, she did reduce.
Okay, and that was because of the times?
I, I assume, yeah, yeah. That was before me, when it was done. But I assume it was for budget change.
Would it actually be to go to full-time from part-time, an additional thirty-five thousand?
Well, you have the hours and you have healthcare and all that that jumps in now that you're full-time.
Wow.
So, yeah, that's roughly the cost to jump.
I, I just mentioned that because she seemed to concentrate on that. And then she said something about if you do that, then the court will pay for.
Well, that's the, the one fund already pays the part-time worker. That's why this position probably makes fifty-five to sixty.
Oh.
But twenty-five of that is already paid for by these other funds that the court gets. They want to bring her full-time, but the extra hours she works have to come from the general fund and that's why the thirty-five.
Well, you know, if we were gonna give her any more, Maureen, it would be actually less to give her the ten thousand more and the merit adjustments than to move that part-time person to full-time. Give the only ten thousand more.
Yeah, well, I was.
So if you want to give her more, I would think.
No, well, I, no, I, I was, I guess justified more so in my mind not, not to give her more for her needs for merit as much as thinking of her work volume and whether or not that it was warranted.
That hard time should be full-time.
Yeah, but, but that's, that's fine.
The person I think that she wanted to bring to full-time was a person who became an attorney while she was employed.
That person left, yeah.
Yes, she left.
Yeah. That's the Abby, that's in my.
Yeah, it was Lisa, the one that left.
Yeah. And that's where.
It's not, again, that was just my, my thought, if she needed more.
Well, you know.
But that's fine.
Honestly, I, I would like to give her everything, you know.
Well, I, you know, I know we would like to do that for everybody, that's fine.
Are we doing?
I guess we're not doing it.
Zero?
We're not moving the part-time to full-time then?
Well, I, I would do, what, you know, what, what do you wanna do?
I think that we should recommend it for next year, because this year we've already given an extra amount.
We gave an extra eight, plus the one point five.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't think that's going to satisfy the judge, but that's like, Vic, do you have any?
No, I don't think he's gonna satisfy the judge either.
But, but what, leave it?
I would be inclined to give her the full merit adjustments and nothing on the part-time to the full-time. That's what I would be inclined to do.
Cover all the merit increases.
Right.
Requests.
Yeah, that's, all right, then she's getting all she wants for all merit. I'm gonna go back to the prosecutor for the one point five. No, I'm just.
The prosecutor gave two.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just trying to logically, you know, that's why I thought unless we just give her an additional amount for that part-time, or maybe we just shouldn't do it at all.
As I said, you do have others who would have liked him to give another merit.
This is so hard.
Okay, when you say we have others that have given merit and we've not gone along with it, is that what you're saying, Todd?
Right, well, unlike with, with the clerk in particular, we said she has to take all the extra she wanted to do, you know, because we're phasing it over time.
Right.
No, no elected official currently, with the exception, now, maybe Vic, has enough to do all the moves they wanted to do this year.
But the clerk, that was like how much of a percent was that?
Well, it was, I mean, they were higher, but we didn't give her any of it. I'm, I'm just saying there's.
Maybe we should just not do this right now.
So maybe we should just do the eighty-six, forty, and then.
Right, for now, yes.
Leave it, leave it where it is.
Wait until the judge comes pounding on the door.
Okay. And again, it is more than we, I mean, she does have something to do with, just not everything.
You know, I would think maybe once, because they all seemed a little bit, you know, quandary when it was pointed out to them they had that money available to them. Let them work within that first and then see how many of them might come back. Would that be acceptable? You know, to see what they are able to do with what they have there.
Okay. Well, she had two people that weren't gonna get any raise and she indicated to me that she probably should give them something out of that discretionary money.
Yeah, well, they'll get the one, everybody'll get the one point five.
And she has.
Plus.
Right, plus this other one.
So she has eighty-six, forty to use in her discretion?
In addition, yeah, in addition to one point five.
Okay, oh, okay.
And juvenile, the, the only move I would recommend is that adding that thirty-five for their clerical position. And I think, I think Judge Berger will be.
That's fine with me, if it's fine with.
And then we'll, we'll, I'll, I'll email Kelly Jo again about the residential treatment.
And the court view, that's still the plan, like, yours.
Right, that'll, yeah, yeah, that's all in together. Of adult probation, we actually covered.
Yeah.
The sheriff, he'll recall, he hired three additional employees at the expense of his drive apron, driveway repairs.
Oh, yeah.
My thought and understanding at the time was for the first pay in January, those employees would begin being paid out of the new sales tax money. And so that is my intention is to recommend that Ron begin charging them there. I did not know if the board, if that, I mean, that's what we talked about.
Sure.
If you're comfortable with that, we'll continue with that.
I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
The other question is, we had talked about road patrol. My recommendation there, though, is that we at least wait until we start collecting the funds before they hire those workers. Is that, currently, we're gonna have to cash advance to cover the corrections officers.
That is the logical, rational, sane way to do it. I guess I'm still caught up in this, all these problems that are across nationally and just wanting to see more patrols out there. Not only for the county, but in the municipalities, just everywhere. And Lord knows, I know it's not gonna stop this kind of thing, but I'm thinking it's to respond and to, I just, it just, I can't believe it. You know, I still cannot believe that.
So we will start collecting the one January?
Yeah.
Well, the businesses will start collecting, we won't see money till prime March.
Quarant. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, even if he puts them on.
I think the BOA wants five percent, not one and a half. Were they given the one and a half last year?
They were given one point five last year and they were given one point five for this year. That, I put that down, that was a request. I don't recommend we go above one point five for anybody, but that's obviously the board's.
Do they have an, an amount, though, to?
They also got an extra amount, yes.
That's good.
And they, and they were.
Sounds, like we did with the judge, it's asking to work within that amount.
The, the postage, if it comes out more, it comes out more, I don't recommend moving it now, though.
Right.
And then we probably do need to do something with the computer phone issues and that's probably around five thousand.
Right.
That's my guess right now, so I recommend that. Data processing, again, I'm not recommending any new positions, that's up to the board. I do recommend we put in money for the software maintenance.
Didn't they have a new position just last year?
Well, they replaced.
Oh, it was a replacement, it wasn't a new position?
I forget the gentleman's name, he started with a V, anyway.
Was it Sean?
Viper, Wyper, Don Wyper retired.
Okay.
And they hired the new lady. So that was a replacement. He actually wants additional from eight to nine. They wanted the tablets. I, I didn't recommend that only because we're trying to put together a phase-two technology project and we had mentioned that tablets and that type of thing were going to be in that phase. But that's up to the board if it wants to approve. Obviously, IT makes sense to have the tablets if anyone.
You know, I would think they should have the tablets and the software maintenance, but that's just my thinking.
Okay.
And what about chairs?
Oh, yes.
I did recommend chairs, we need to begin desk and chair replacements across the board.
If, Todd, you got here waiting for phase-two, if tech project.
Right.
Will we have to order new tablets again? Is that why you said that?
Well, that, you know, the idea of phase one was get the infrastructure in place so we even know what we can handle.
Okay.
The answer to a lot of things to a lot of departments has been our servers won't handle that.
Okay.
So a lot of departments have these ideas of how they'd like to do things. The idea of tech phase two, then, was to begin buying all these ancillary products that could do these other wonderful things.
Okay.
But do it as one lump sum in case we need to go to bond or something, rather than chipping away here and there, you get it, but you don't type of a thing. Package it all up, figure out how much it's gonna cost to do and then do it across the board.
But it is IT.
Right, and that's why I said, if anybody makes sense, it is them.
I think they should, yeah.
Let's, let's approve the tablets.
Okay, stick to that.
And what about the training increase, do they need that?
Oh, yeah.
They did request more training, they, they've always requested. They currently have, I think, two thousand available.
So we should do the training, we're not giving them a new position.
Do that, okay.
I would think the training and the software and the tablets and their chairs.
Okay.
That would be.
Do everything but the new position.
Yeah, but the new position. I'm trying to be conservative there.
And then the public defender, I do recommend all his, his were minor, and again, the training and travel or just because costs have gone up. The only thing I didn't recommend was the maintenance repair, that's five hundred dollars, we can do that as well, just. If you wanted to. Put them in.
In the seventy-two.
Okay, yeah, so we'll do all those. That only leaves the outside agencies to deal with. I don't, we could.
I have to go.
Tomorrow morning, I believe, was available.
Can we do this tomorrow morning?
And during, or we can do some during my meeting.
Oh, sure.
I thought someone canceled tomorrow morning, I'll, I'll double check with Doug, but we can address him tomorrow. Squeeze some time in. Okay. And you can think, think tonight what you wanna do.
Oh, yeah. Well, you know, I wonder, can we get any clear definition on whether or not the Doug Wardman can?
Well, Denise would have to be contacted.
Yeah, I can email her, I don't, I.
We put in contingency, so.